So I call the spectacle, you know, the planning and zoning information for order. With items as well called.
Also, I'm here.
I'm here.
So. Here and we have Kevin.
Here.
So Kevin will play Steve. Decisions. Have him sit first, Steve. Public communication. We did have. One that's attached to the package and we got another one this afternoon. From Diane. I want everybody to.
I got them both.
Okay. So all business workshop, we have our data centers and short term rentals. Oh, to start with our. Data centers, did you wanna? Send anything, Jeff?
Yeah, I've got some slides, not a whole lot, but might as well pull that up, just give me a second.
Jeff is doing that, just as a reminder, this is our last workshop. Yeah, yeah. Hoping we can make some final decisions on data center because the moratorium is over July fifteenth, you know. Takes, you know, two, two and a half months to process an application. So I'd like to get it from.
I mean, right down to the actual words or just the basic things.
I'm hoping very close to the actual words on data centers. I think we're very close. Yeah, and any tweaks we could do at the staff level.
Is he gonna be able to? If we have any changes, be able to work with that, or is he? Yeah.
I can make one or round of changes under our current budget.
But but a lot of new, no new research, I mean. The end of mine.
Yeah, yeah.
It's perfect. But I just wondered whether tonight where we don't, maybe we don't wanna get into. Changing happy to glad type changes.
No, we can do that.
I'd rather do those later.
Yes.
Only the changing the meaning.
Yes.
And then we can get through both items tonight.
All right, well then let us dive in unless there's any other preliminary discussion.
Yep, all good.
All right. So based on our conversation in January. There were two. Small changes made to the text for data centers. In the definition of data center, we deleted the text. Quote pertaining to a particular business or classification or body of knowledge. That was something that's in the state's definition, but this body felt was irrelevant. For your purposes, and frankly, I agree, so that has been deleted. And the second. Piece was for the utility notification. We had asked for initially demonstrating the data centers demands on the utility. For the estimated life of the system. Also, this body agreed collectively that that was probably unreasonable, so the term for the estimated life of the system. Has been deleted. So i- in terms of the. Data center text itself, that was the extent of what we discussed in January. The big hanging issue is, are any edits to your noise ordinance section seven point four three I. I know that Deb has had brought that language, that draft language to your zoning official. Of course, as we've discussed, the number one issue. Is that your zoning official feel comfortable, they can take that language and enforce it. And my understanding and I will let Deb. Fill in fill in the blanks here, but what I understood from her conversation. Was your zoning official is not comfortable using wave signature as a standard for. Monitoring noise. And Deb, is there anything else about that conversation you'd like to bring to the table tonight?
Yeah, I think you've covered it, Jeff. I mean, they were. You're certainly not familiar with the concept, not familiar with what kind of equipment would be needed, and they were concerned about whether or not they would be able to. Enforce it and take it to court and have it stand up in court.
But if this were done, it would require hiring people to do. I don't think this is the type of thing that. I rest when I read this.
I mean, I suppose that is a possibility to to hire someone to actually go out and take those readings.
Well, you're doing it. Twenty.
Not something we typically do.
No, I.
No, no.
But what we do, I mean, I think we're putting the onus on the developer. And I think that's fine to say the developer must hire. A structural, an acoustic engineer who's got one of these things that can do it and then produce a document that he's going to stamp. That says this meets it.
Their concern is next year, we get noise complaints.
Well, then then you have a specific thing, I think you'd have to go after.
Right, and then they would not, they felt they would not be able to actually go out, take a measurement that would stand up in court.
Right, oh, may do.
Then you might have to.
Yeah.
Hire some.
But that's. We don't have the resources to bring a specialist on every time we get a noise.
I bet you won't get very many, because I doubt there's gonna be, you know, a hundred.
If there's two, I'm not sure what we do, but if that's the case, what we're trying to avoid is to have a particular wavelength spike.
Right.
So if not this, because that's all this was, even no matter how you massage it. How do you get there?
I don't, yeah.
Well, I think the other thing, I think it fits into the state noise ordinance to have that in there. Because they're dealing with different, it's very interesting ordinance. Actually, I finally read the whole thing, but it's, they're really getting into these other noises that really bother people, you know. That you are not the traditional noises when I think of this, so. I think it'd be good if we could accommodate that, because it's really important. I mean, that was a major thing on the last one.
Yeah, that answers so much of the questions came back, you know, the size of the thing, how much footprint, and so much of it came back to. The noise it will produce and so we can't, we need to knock that out somehow. And it's not the overall amount of noise, it's these particular spikes.
This could be chain rewarded to. Direct the applicant to. To make, to take the readings or to demonstrate, it should be demonstrated by the.
Well, I think the way it reads right now is on the applicant to demonstrate initially.
Also put it on the applicant or the owner if the complaint arises.
Hmm, yes.
Yep.
That force that, yeah, force the owner. To identify what the source is and provide a solution.
Yeah, identify the source, provide the measurement and potentially provide the solution.
So I would just. Well, I don't know if the town has an acoustic engineer on call. But I would say. You would probably want. A third party not, you know, chosen by the town. To serve as that acoustic engineer for any complaints. Because if they just hired the same, you know.
Right, but the the engineer could be approved by the town.
The same as we do for appraisers for. Open space, right? Appraisers come in.
Should be approved by.
Yes.
You know, we could have a list, right, maybe, or something like that?
Yeah.
Just generate a list of.
But this new. Paragraph in seven point four. It would only apply to data centers?
No, this would apply to any industrial uses.
But but do we really want that, or would it be only industrial uses that are? Seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day type things.
We can put that in there.
No, I I just don't wanna overburden. New applicants from coming into the town. If it's not necessary.
I mean, you know, part of the noise is from the machines themselves, part is from, as we discussed, generators. So yeah, it's up to you. That you, again, I would, I would, I would word it that, you know, if you have operations that. You know, go beyond standard operating hours of whatever, seven AM to. Nine PM or, you know, what, name, name the hours. And see if you're, if you're operating. Past those hours, then you need to comply with this.
And maybe that's the trick, but have those hours narrow.
Either narrow, between hours or twenty-four hours.
Well, I wouldn't say twenty-four, that's a lot too, so they do it until eleven o'clock every night, and that's. Saturdays, I would say Monday through Friday, beyond Monday through Friday. Seven to six or something like that, where the normal sheet metal fabricating plant would operate. And anything beyond that, do, but then you, then you come under this.
That makes sense, I guess, that way, because most of the people would be home then.
Overwhelmingly.
When they're, if they're work, they don't care.
That's right.
And there's a lot of other noise in the background.
Well, that's. Part of it today, but yeah. So it's not as bad. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so.
It makes sense to me. Is that the timeframe we wanna say? So I I would say always, you know, to be more conservative, and then if it looks like, you know, we can always revisit this stuff, but it's. Impossible to go the other.
Saves a seven, if we use say. Seven hundred to eighteen hundred.
Five days a week.
Five days a week.
Yeah, Monday through Friday, seven AM to six PM is what I'm hearing.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and staff, are you comfortable with this?
Um. Marginally, how's that? I mean, yeah, noise is tricky, and you're right, they're putting a lot on our enforcement.
As well as any.
No, no, it's not, we're not putting.
No, it's not enforcement, but yeah.
It's not enforcement. I think that's, if you say that the. If there are complaints. Then it's up to the operator or owner of the project to. Get them resolved.
But I think the enforcement part of it is. They do it, they have an engineer, they do all these things, and then six months later, somebody says. No, it didn't, you know, they brought in another piece of equipment, I don't know what it is, but I'm hearing a whistle, then what does he do?
Yeah.
And that's what he's saying, that he's not equipped to do.
No, no, but if he gets a whistle, then he goes back and makes the person that owns or operates the plant to. To hire somebody to identify what the source is.
Can you do that just based on? Well, it might.
A neighbor's complaint?
Could be just, you know, sometimes you get people who.
I would think you'd go out and try to listen to it and see it as a. Is it a problem or not?
Then who determine?
That's where you get in.
That's where you get into who's. Get a, get in. Or if it's. You get a neighbor who just, I I'm pretty sure I hear this thing and I complain, so now.
Or it's coming in at, you know, just random.
Yeah, but if he's up, yeah.
Because now we're getting kind of flaky as well, I think there's a problem. You prove that there's not, that's, that's a tough one.
I don't know the solution to that.
I mean, I think practically what would happen in that case is that. If it would require the owner to produce evidence that it. It is meeting our standards. That would be it. I I mean, it's, it can't take it to court because a neighbor says, I think I might hear something, I mean.
No, right? No, you can't take.
Of course, if it's really bad, the neighbor. Can hire an engineer to do it. If it's really ruining their life, and in fact, it's. And probably.
He's the one that, yeah, the neighbor.
Probably, and probably recover the cost of it after the fact.
The neighbor, you're right.
If it was you, would you do that?
Well, but we also wanna try to avoid.
Oh, yeah.
That situation. Someone feeling that, that they need to do that, you know, or that they just endure it.
But I I think with this, the restrictions we have on size of the. Data centers, we really aren't gonna see a problem. With the noise, unless it's really.
That's our best guess. That's our best guess.
Because one other question I had on that paragraph, for the, for example, the house is on Hazelwood Hill. Because what if somehow you have a data center in there, and yet it's all residential, right? Because there's some big lots in there. Then. How does this really protect the residents that are in an industrial zone? In industrial zone, where you can have data centers.
Yeah, that was the concern.
Centers are small.
They'll be small, I understand that.
But doesn't matter, it's still got the same sound requirements that are.
It might very well be, but. Would they still have the same rights to go and say, hey, you're not meeting? The standards.
It does say, or abutting any existing residential use.
Says residential use, not.
Yeah, that was the issue that I had brought that up at that. Previously.
Well.
I mean, it's, you know, the thing is that that this is the M. That zone is supposed to be. To to benefit from residential proximity to residential property.
Yeah, well, that answers that question, thank you.
The only terminology in here, by the way, is that I had an issue with the way it was phrased. That I think it changes the meaning. Which is, let me see. Is that. Any property must approximate the wave signature of the existing ambient noise level, that means, I don't. Yeah. That's not exactly right. To approximate, because that would mean I'm trying to match it, you're not trying to match it, I just don't want the high points to go beyond it.
So the approximate was the language we all agreed to last time. That you are, you are not, because we had match and people were not comfortable with that. But that's why we had the must approximate the wave signature and not increase the existing ambient noise level.
I I think the right words are somewhere in between, and so approximate, approximate or approximate might be in there, but the idea is that you don't want to exceed. The approximate wave signature at any point, because the way signature can be incredibly different. Just don't want any spikes in it.
What do you want to say, approximate but not exceed?
Well, to approximate the existing isn't what we're trying to do, we don't, aren't asking them to tune their air conditioning systems to sound like traffic. And that's what this actually says right now.
Yeah, but when you take the noise, you're gonna have background noise in there to begin with.
But this kind of says, I'm trying to kind of match it. It didn't mean to say that, but that's what this says right now. Try to make your noise. Approximate the existing noise. And that's not what we, that's not what we meant, we just wanted it to be a limit. The approximate. The approximate, the approximate ambient noise.
How do you get, how do you get an appro? Submit. What's approximate? Yeah, how do you achieve, how do you get that number?
It's not.
Well, or whatever it is, that it's.
Then what do they do, just straighten the curve out?
No, you don't straighten it out.
You don't want it. The approximate though. Wanted to be similar. Similar, yeah.
It's a.
Without getting. Plus or minus five percent or something like that.
It's not the generation, you just want the generation, not the change.
The way.
Because the the signature, which you get images of, and they're really pretty, looks like that. This is twelve DB, this is. Beyond human hearing. And so we don't care if their signature looks like this. But we don't want it to be that.
No, yeah, but you're measuring ambient plus what's there from the facility. When you're taking the measurements.
Right.
Let's say at the property line, you're not changing, significantly changing the way.
At at any particular wave place, because we said, that that's what we're trying to differentiate between just DBs.
No, it's that.
And.
Right.
The curve, our limit is the existing signature. That's our, that's our top limit, is the existing signature.
Yeah, you wanna say it doesn't significantly change.
Yeah, but those words are are just like mushy. It doesn't, you don't have anything to approximate.
No, no, you measure it, it says you measure it first before. Anything is done, this takes two measurements. If you read it. Because it says, and not increase the existing ambient noise level. So that means you gotta go in. And do one week. Better go. Make your. Determination of what the baseline.
And then.
Not exceed. And. You'd measure it after you run the equipment. For one week.
Yeah, I'm not.
And say the two have to. Not, not. The not have a large variation.
Do you not exist, do you not exceed the existing ambient noise level is exactly right? But what we're trying to say by having this term terminology and. The approximate wave signature. Is that we don't want to exceed the existing ambient noise level at any frequency point of the existing wave.
Well, you might do it a little bit because.
That's the approximate part.
Yeah, because I can't believe you go in in two days, you're gonna get the same.
Yeah, same result. Because these are special permits, does that give us an ability to? Review this at at a. At another time? Similar to what we do at a Whittles or something like that, applicant comes back.
Put on a special permit, is that it be renewed?
I mean. It seems like this is gonna be difficult for the zoning enforcement, almost impossible.
Zoning enforcement.
Well.
Cannot, you can't.
Even like, what does he do?
Oh, it's gotta be an engineering decision. Somebody has to come in. That understands noise. And say it's not gonna be a significant change.
But we're talking about.
But I don't know how you define significant.
Yeah, no, that's it, significant, approximate. You know, they're, they're, they're not exact.
No, they're not gonna change, they are not gonna be the same day to day. You go do it today, it's not gonna be like tomorrow.
Because you're only gonna measure the the one week. It's all we've asked them to do. What do you think, Jeff?
I have nothing else to add to this conversation. I've given you all I have. I will say, I've done, this is, this has spurred me to investigate a lot of. Municipal noise codes, and I would say ninety-eight percent of them strictly rely on decibel measurements. You know, within zoning, it's hard to do more than that. Now, I was, I was telling a colleague today, maybe you're cracking something, and like, this is gonna be the vanguard in the future of. How municipalities manage noise, you know? But I I. I don't have anything else to tell you right now beyond what. What I have.
Can we put decibels into the, I know that we didn't wanna do that.
This is something different, that's the problem.
You have to measure.
Simple test.
You have to measure it and see what the decibels are. At that location, just say the.
You can't do, because the problem with the decibels is it's. Is an average overall wavelength. In fact, it's a weighted average.
Well, then unless you wanna say you don't have any frequencies that exceed us. Exceeded by. A certain amount. Like three decibels or six or.
The state has actual decibels in the regulations.
Yeah, so that's what we started with, was you can't. Exceed by X amount, and then we changed it to you cannot exceed. What it is today. And then we changed it to this discussion of wavelength and ambient noise level. So that's why the.
Public feedback on that, that that is really the problem with type of. It would have been nice and easy because just at decibels, we don't like.
Can we just use a state, say that's it? I don't think we're gonna see a problem.
I think it's. Change.
I mean, the big data centers might be a real problem, but these small ones. I don't think you're gonna have. Where's the noise come?
I don't think. We that's, we think we cured it just by the sound, but by the size, but.
Well, yeah, but where's the noise kinda come from, it's an air conditioning unit or probably that's it.
Uh, no, or.
Generator.
Generator.
Transformers.
They hum. They hum. Yeah. It's a different tone.
You go to portal dot C P dot gov, which I just did. I mean, Connecticut does, as Stu indicated, you know, have very significant, you know, nine page. Noise level measurement procedures in DB levels. So either we try to craft it, in my opinion, what we just stated somehow. Being explicit in the two measurement that the zoning official does not own, but the. The operator owns, or we take this nine page Connecticut dot gov portal and we use theirs entirely. It's eleven pages, unfortunately.
Well, we actually have that under seven point four dash three point one. Another, less otherwise specified. When we reference that whole section of the state of Connecticut.
Right, so that's already what rules, and we say in no instance be. Beyond what the state requires, like the state requirements are built in.
So why? Why can't we just rely on the state requirements?
Is the zoning official able to? To handle the state requirements? Or is it just as much problem for to do that?
I mean, the state requirements are are key to decibels, so.
It's a problem.
It's a. Right, but that's easier to measure, I mean, more familiar to measure.
Yeah, but. Yeah.
Yeah, within the state, there there is the, there is a distinction on enforcement. And it's pretty clear. That zoning official or the health director would be able to enforce it. But the measurement of DB is. Is much easier than what we just discussed, wave signatures. So I'm not sure I even understand.
But yeah, in the wave signature, I think it's gonna take interpretation. It's gonna be, somebody's making a decision.
Yeah. What, how approximate?
They think.
Hello, I haven't read the state.
I think it would be better off just using the state, and if it doesn't work, then we gotta come up with.
I think it's certainly safe, just use the safe, that the state, and if it doesn't work. Then we meet here next year and say it didn't work.
Then we're gonna have to change it, yeah. But I don't think we.
As it, so as a baseline, just use the state, and if that doesn't work. Then we come back and. Become.
Have to know why it does. No, what doesn't work.
Can we keep the. The other parts of this? That the measurement, or is that, I I haven't read the state ordinance, so I'm not familiar with it, so I'm not. Comfortable weighing in on it, so I. Maybe this is something that, I mean, obviously Jeff can't. Help us any more than he has, maybe this is something that we should. Like. That's the only thing I think that's left. And I would probably say to go to the state unless. We can do it better than.
We should just reference the state requirement.
Yeah, why don't you do that, Jeff, put that in there to reference the state, and I'll provide them with the state legislation.
Okay.
But shouldn't we keep it here, how often people should do this?
No.
I I think the standards are.
Does the state say that, how often?
No, no.
I don't think so.
It's just because you wanted to have.
Does this take to address the ambient noise?
I think it does. It doesn't, it it does, and and there are different standards. Based on categories or classes. And versus, in relation to a class that's next to you, so an industrial. Use that's next to a residential use has a certain threshold, but if it's next to another industrial use, it's a different threshold.
Which makes sense. Use or zone?
No. You.
Use.
I mean, they they use the word zone, but it's not. It's not like zoning district.
Okay.
Like they use emitter zone as a commercial.
Um, right.
Mike.
Yeah, okay, I I haven't read it, so I'd be interested to read it, but I think that probably we should just move on because it's. We could talk about this all night.
Well, I think it gets it.
Yeah.
And personal feelings.
Yeah.
It's not.
I think we all know what we wanna do, it's just how do you, how do you get there?
Right, and so I will, I will reiterate, and I was serious about this, because I've been talking with a number of colleagues about this. This is an issue that frustrates a lot of communities for all the reasons that we've been discussing. So I I do think it's worth continuing to have this conversation, and you know. You might be the ones who discover. A a better way to address this, right now, there aren't many. Examples of best practices around the country that. Don't include. Measuring decibels. And that's it, so I would encourage you to keep having this conversation, but I again, I my. Personal professional feeling is that. Just given the way this is written and the scale of data centers that we're talking about that you you might allow. One, I don't think a standalone data center person is going to come along and say, oh, wow, this is great, this is the community I wanna be in. Like, I just don't think you're going to get many applications for these standalone uses, given. The standards, yeah, and you know. I I think, I think the the sound issue, the noise issue is is probably not going to. Come up, but if it does, I mean, that's the beauty of being in Connecticut, you can go back and. Address it and change it. Fairly easily. So I I wouldn't. Personally spend too much more time on this.
Right.
All right, I keep thinking about.
Does the Connecticut, does the state standard? Put that initial onus on, or are we just putting it here? Does the Connecticut, does the state standard put that initial onus on, or are we just red, putting it here? To make sure that the onus is on the developer to come up with this thing.
Right, and I think we can clarify that, I think we can keep some of this language here. And if you want it, like, I don't, I don't recommend this, but I think you could keep. The request for this is the, this is the data we want uh at the beginning before we give you a um certificate of occupancy. You could continue to ask for those things. Um but then use the state's standards as your um. Threshold, you know, your way of judging if if they're acceptable or not.
Yeah, no, that's.
The applicant to demonstrate.
That it will.
I think would be the.
That sounds good.
Yeah, no, but then we're relying on the s- state law to uh for the zoning official to then enforce it, right? He's got that.
That's what he.
Backing him up at a later, that's our problem, right?
Definitely.
And we can handle it in the beginning, but not.
And that's it, yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
I'd say we are.
I think it, yeah.
We are.
I would want to be, move on to the fence.
Alright, let's do it. Short term rentals. So as a little bit of a recap from January.
Thirty days. Thirty minutes. We usually block.
Alright, so ba- a little bit of uh updates from uh last time. We had few changes, um the definition of short term rental per your direction. Uh we're using the state's definition, uh we have been using the the town's definition that uh had been. Um used in the draft uh uh ordinance for for S T Rs uh but for your direction where we've got the state's definition back in. Uh in the table of permitted uses, you agreed to allow short term rentals in the I M zoning district. And that uh the uh I M zoning district would be among the districts where a special permit is not required. Uh and I will just say from the get go, there was a typo in my uh memo, which I apologize for, which I'll get to shortly. Um and then in residential districts. We specified that short term rentals must be on a lot that is the primary residence of an owner occupant. Uh so those were the major changes that we discussed. Uh. Beyond that, uh there was this issue raised about how short term rental regulations. Meld with or compared to the bed and breakfast regulations. And uh during our meeting in January, uh your direction more or less was for uh short term rentals. Uh in residential districts to be treated like bed and breakfast. Uh and there are several options on um how to treat those two uses in terms of the table of permitted uses. And uh we'll go over what those options are. In the latest draft that you have in front of you, uh some of the bed and breakfast. Uh performance standards, conditions have been uh repeated in the short term rental section and vice versa, uh to make sure those are. Consistent. Uh and I I do just wanna point out, there are a number of things that ended up in the bed and breakfast standards that. Horsing wooden group still feels would be more appropriate in general ordinances and not in zoning, uh but. For the sake of consistency, uh and and you're getting this over the the finish line, uh we're fine. Maintaining that in zoning for now, but just put a pin in, I'm what we'll go over some of these, I think there are, there are some things that uh would. Are just not a great fit for zoning. So, as a comparison of uh the U standards. So the current draft before you for uh short term rentals. Uh we have them allowed conditionally in the C N, the C R and the I M. Uh allowed by special permit and conditions. In the R S, R, R U, R M, M D D, M T C and M B C. And prohibited in the I G, W W, G R and G C. Uh compared to the bed and breakfast standards that you have currently, uh bed and breakfast are just simply. Uh permitted in the C N and the C R. Uh they are permitted conditionally in the R U, R M, M D D, M T C and M B C. Uh special permit and conditions in the R S and R and prohibited in the I M, I G, W W, G R and G C. So, one of the first things uh to discuss this evening is. Uh how we want to treat these two uses going forward, uh we can either use the current. Um bed and breakfast standards for both uses, we could use the proposed short term rental standards for both. We can keep them as is, and I think there are some logical reasons to keep them different, um or. We can come up with a single set of uh U standards for both uses, but you know, maybe what we have. Uh for one or the other isn't quite right, and you wanna make some changes uh to be consistent, so. That was uh, it's probably, this is probably not gonna be a super structured conversation, this was the best way I could think of to structure it, uh but I guess. You know, we spent a lot of time as a group um talking about where these types of short term rentals would be appropriate. Uh I did note in uh Dan Glombotsky's letter uh that this body didn't really have an opportunity to talk much about the bed and breakfast. Standards, um so maybe. You'd rather, you know, the short term rental standards be our our guide, uh and maybe you're uncomfortable with the B and B standards once you take a look at them. Uh so just wanted to throw that out, see how people felt about. Where these two uses should be allowed.
I I'd recommend that we concentrate on short term rentals, which is our problem, and if we feel that B and B regulations require change. Can do that later.
Well, but the only thing we just wanna identify.
We should be aware of what the B and B and say, we wanna use any of the those standards.
What's the impact difference? If it's a B and B versus a short term rental. What's the impact on the neighborhood difference, I think there is, in that the short term rental, however you structure it, three hundred and sixty two, uh a hundred and eighty dot days a year. There could be nobody, the owner could be in Florida. I think that's the big difference with the B and B, the owner's there.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's the difference, and how does that alter the changes, so I think they should match up. Except for that particular feature, I think everything else, parking. Well, strangers in the neighborhood, whatever it is, they're all the same, but one is different, and that's owner always there. As opposed to owner not there six months out of the year.
Well, there's a difference in the facility too. Is that the P, the B and B is just a bedroom. Where a short term rental has to be a residential or meet the.
That's true.
Domestic dwelling unit or whatever.
They're eating dinner in there.
No, you have.
B and B, they're not eating dinner in there.
No, hmm, no, but you have other things that are there too.
That's correct.
So there's a definition of what if.
Yeah, no, and in a bed and breakfast, you're gonna have.
It's more like.
Probably the max two people in it.
Yeah.
I know when we tried, when we had had kids, then we worked. Breakfast, they told us you're not welcome anymore, so uh.
Oh, really?
No, but 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 I, that's.
Bed and breakfast are sixteen people.
Well, but.
Yep. Who are occupied?
Sixteen people, but not, not the same, you know, when you have uh sixteen people and there's. You're renting out rooms, in all likelihood, it's not the same group of people who are renting all of the rooms, right? There's gonna be a mix of people, so you're not gonna get the part.
Wedding houses.
But yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, now people will definitely rent out an entire B and B, uh. So there are, there are, there are some subtle differences, um but there are. I think there are, there are enough differences to justify treating them differently in different zoning districts. Um and I'm personally comfortable with what you see on the screen in front of you, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I think it was a. Sue who brought this up that uh, you know, why would we treat these things differently, uh so we we. Wanted to show you where they are treated differently today and see if you're comfortable with that.
I just wanna make sure that the difference, i- if that's what I'd said was the only real difference, which is this significant one. That's reflected in what the differences are that we're saying there. And where it goes and how it's restricted or whatnot. Because where it's the same, then it's the same, but there's a one big difference, and that's not owner occupied. Six months out of the year. Yeah, which is what, what that happened because we couldn't, that was illegal, right, we couldn't do that.
Well, we don't.
We don't have the ability, that's something that an ordinance could do.
Yes.
I think we need to look at what the definition of bed and breakfast is, just to go back, it's not just a room, doesn't really say that, you know. If you look at what things actually say.
Yeah.
It is more like short term rentals than the, you know, who we're saying there.
A whole lot.
But it's really, you have to give breakfast, either maybe a voucher to the. Downtown establishment or something, so. So I don't know.
The big.
Sorry, it's big.
The other big difference is that bed and breakfast is a full time, year round business, uh whereas short term rentals. Are as often as the owner wants to put them on the market, right? Um so not necessarily.
How can you say that, that a bed and breakfast has to be, they're nice, I mean, we use bed and breakfast, they're not open all year round.
Okay, can.
And yeah, well, so can a short term rental, no.
Not the way we're, we're doing it here.
If you want.
Six months.
Bed and breakfast open year round, the owner has to live there year with it, it doesn't have to be open.
Right. No, understand that, it's owner occupied, and the other one, you have your six months.
But the short term.
Saying the bed and breakfast doesn't have to be year round business, so.
No, doesn't have to be, but it can be, we're doing, why couldn't the short term rental be year round?
No, it can be.
Oh, it can be. I was saying, they both can be either way, it's just generally speaking, a bed and breakfast, someone is running is their. Business, uh and also, most people are not gonna disappear from their home for. You know, five months and, you know, three weeks out of the year, uh particularly the way we structured this, and again. Um. That issue is really the the town ordinance issue, um. Where we run to the same issue if people are renting out their own home and when they're gone somewhere else. Uh but by and large, the way we've got this structure, the owner is there, uh and. That's about.
Why is it, Jeff, why, why is it that uh? We can require the owner to be on the property for the bed and breakfast, but we can't do it for the short term rental?
Right, that is one of those issues where I, my professional opinion is you can't really do that, I I I don't like the way the bed and breakfast. Is written, I think there are some things that shouldn't be in zoning and should be uh in the, in a general ordinance, and that's a perfect example of that. Um. So I'm not, I'm not a fan of that.
Well, the bed and breakfast, saying you're serving breakfast, so that.
No, you know, I don't think you you're even really saying that.
Provided. You don't have to.
Providing it, no, I don't, I don't think you have to, you provide it.
All the way I read it, it looks.
I don't think it's the requirement, like you have the zoning enforcement officer coming in.
No, well, and they could just leave a cabinet full of Cheerios, right? Help yourself.
Some cheap hotels.
But that was the original definition, but but.
Yeah, it's like Airbnb, the original definition was bed breakfast there too.
Yeah.
So it's like, things are a little.
No, but I mean, I, I think if you looked historically, that it was so you could allow. A commercial operation into a residential district, that's what it was.
You can at least get breakfast.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I think they were trying to make it more. More like that than running an hotel.
Oh, yeah.
And I'll look, raise the other part in terms of it being year round business. A lot of what we're already seeing and probably might see more of is something we're providing for, which is accessory buildings. Being so that the accessory building can be year round of somebody being in, out there constantly, so long as six months out of the year. It got, it's someone's in residence.
Right.
So it is, can be year round.
It can be your. Yes, or you, or you could have.
We're seeing a lot of those kind of.
You can have a, an accessory apartment in the house.
Absolutely.
And that could be your.
That's right, I'm such a accessory apartment, accessory.
Our building, so. Right.
And I'll question whether or not it can be both, because right now we're saying it can't be both, I don't know why not. So uh my my inclination is once again to go with what Diane is recommending. Is to forbid them in the R S. And my reason and my, what I would suggest is that, that some, this is, this is what we're try, we're trying to protect these residential, single family homes. And then, depending on what kind of an ordinance we can get, then we can either, you know, deal with it when. After the town council has done. But that we're moving in a, you know, this conservative way, and then. That protects, because it, once again, I think that what Jeff is telling us is that. That owner occupancy is gonna be a difficult one to um require, you can't. But, but if we just forbid them in the R S, then we're good, and then if there's an ordinance that says. You know, they have to be owner occupied, then we could let them in.
I don't think it's that, this, the way it's drafted, I don't think it's gonna be that easy to enforce all this, I'm not sure, I'm not sure these regulations are. Um because I think a lot of LLCs and stuff like that are others' own property, and then how are we going, how someone like. The zoning enforcement officer, gonna make sure it's actually their principal residence, you know?
But if we can lay down what we think are the right ground rules. And then get council to support it with an ordinance.
You're more of an optimist than I am, I guess. Not, I, I just don't.
You don't think.
I'm more agnostic, I don't know what's gonna.
I, well, I think that.
I don't think we wanna leave it as a wild west.
No, but.
It is today.
But to finish up on, I guess my point, alright, why I see is the basic problem with these, okay. First off, I think it's very hard to know if they can even comply with the way it's written, the fact that it'd be their primary residence. The second thing is, by having the ability, which I understand, not to have the owner there. We're really in the position as we are now to rely on the neighbors to enforce um these regulations, you know? I mean, there's nobody else can do it, I can do it, because it's a lot of units. So, those, those I really see.
But if you really read, read the intent of the zoning regulations, you weren't allowed to have a business in a residential area.
Hmm.
Hmm, right, so and that's, so how did they get through?
Hmm.
You know.
Oh, I know, they shouldn't, you were illegal, I think.
They are.
They say if it's not.
Our enforcement officer and our lawyer didn't read it like that, that was not their interpretation.
I know.
So. I know, so here's my point, so why don't we, as Mike, Mike has, why don't we take R S and move it that in X? Why not do that? It's a more conservative approach, but to me, it it shrink wraps the enforcement a whole lot easier.
No, it's true. It's true.
It's actually what Diane said, so.
Okay. Well, you stated it well, Michael.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I think it, I think it makes, I mean, always, it's easier to move in a, you know, to. Make these things, let, you know, less strict than it is to try to rein it in after the fact.
Right.
Although there's a quirky little part that the M D D area is wrapped with an R seven, it's not R S, it's R seven. Which, which is, I'm having, still having a trepidation with just removing, you know. Uh not allowing to just stand alone in that area, but this still sort of leaves it in open to expand. Mystic, to allow for these things right in Mystic. Not just in the M D D, but even beyond it a little bit, and I think that's completely.
It's completely what how?
Appropriate.
Uh.
To allow these things right in downtown Mystic if we can without, it'd still be conditional. When you get down to the inches and feet, it won't fit in most places, but at least they could try to make it fit. My favorites are the ones that, or is right behind the, as you go up the hill, there's the house that's. Or across from the church, that's definitely been outfitted as a short term rental beautifully, and it's between a busy road and the church. Yeah, right, so who cares, and so I don't know why we won't wanna stop that, but right now. We're saying, no, 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 you have to live there for six months, I I still have an issue with that, because that's a perfect place to just say it's.
Because that's a perfect place to just say it's, it looks like a house and it works like a house, but it's a short-term rental. The only way they can make it legal right now, if they bought the house next door and can join the lots. And call it accessory.
And I think you, you may be. Uh, what we have now, but the, these things shouldn't have been there to begin with.
Shouldn't have, but are.
Well, but so, so this is how we solve that problem.
Yeah, but in this, in this case, that one, that particular one and the one up the hill. I think. I don't want to stop them because that sounded like a pretty good expansion of mystics. I don't want someone to have to live in that spot. It'd be a terrible place to live. It's a perfectly good place to visit.
Yeah, no, I can't.
Mystic is what it is in nineteen twenty and that's it. Saying. Time mark is on.
I think.
Things change and allow them to change a little.
We can't zone it house by house, though.
No, that's not true. Well, actually this kind of works because it already, the R seven is what that is in. And so.
Yeah, but there's got to.
Allowed conditionally.
Going back, I guess, to Diane's letter, I, I do like her definition of short-term rental. I think it's concise and very clear. I think what we have in the draft here is pretty convoluted, actually, but. That's just my personal opinion. I thought you did a nice job suggesting something for consideration. Always helps have things shortened, creamy.
So one, I. Agree, I was never a fan of the state's. Definition and Diane mentions this in her letter too. There is an advantage of. Regulatory consistency in using whatever the state uses, uh, but I think. What she provided was clear. I think what the town had considered in their ordinance was also clear. And I'd be happy with either one. Uh, and it might. I don't know, I've, we've heard from everyone yet, but is there? A general consensus, uh, on adding RS to the prohibited list?
I'd agree with that.
I'm okay with that. I don't have a problem.
And, uh. The reason, or at least the logic, if anyone asks. Uh, the difference between the short-term rentals and the bed and breakfast is that someone. The owner lives in the bed and breakfast and is there. Probably. Uh, more often. Um, or at least when there are guests and for that reason, you're comfortable continuing to allow bed and breakfasts in the RS.
Yes.
Okay. Let me just take some notes. Anything else about uses or you feel like we make that one change, we're generally comfortable with everything else?
For uses?
For the use table, yes.
Oh, for uses, yeah.
Cause next we'll talk about conditions, but wanted to make sure people were comfortable with uses. Okay. Great. All right. So, uh, conditions. Um, short-term rentals versus bed and breakfasts. Uh, so what I had done was just tried to make the conditions consistent. From one to the other, uh, there may be some you disagree with. Uh, so this is a list of the bed and breakfast conditions that we added to short-term rentals. Uh, so added that the location of the STRs. Can be in the principal building or up to one accessory building, which was consistent with what we had already. Uh, envisioned for STRs, I think, uh, just putting it in writing. Uh, code compliance, the building is to be in compliance with all applicable zoning, building, fire, electrical, plumbing codes. I mean, obviously that goes without saying, but there's no harm in reiterating it certainly. And then. The big thing, um. Was adding that in residential and mixed-use districts, uh, so all the Rs plus the MDD, MTC and MVC. Uh, the following conditions would apply. Um, this sets the limit of occupants so that that's consistent from bed and breakfast to short-term rentals. Uh, we have the, the standard for exterior evidence, uh, that. It's not going to look any different. The house isn't going to look any different except for perhaps a sign. And the required, the, the extra required parking. Uh, this, again, this is something that I don't think belongs in zoning, but at least in the short term to be consistent. Uh, the owner is to maintain a guest register and retain registration records for a minimum of three years. Again, not a fan of that, but if we want to be consistent between B and Bs and. Short-term rentals, that's what you have today. And then, uh, also on temporary events. Uh, just to note that, uh, if you're going to have a temporary event, you have to follow. Uh, section five point one, three H. And, uh, the temporary events are not allowed in the R and RS districts or in RU district on a site of less than two acres. Uh, and because of the noise and events issues, that was a big part of what we talked about before. Again, I think. A lot of this is better for, um, a townwide ordinance, uh, rather than zoning. But at least in the interim, if we're going to be consistent. It seems, you know, if you're going to have these standards for B and Bs, you should have them for short-term rentals too.
Well, it might help when we get the town council to prepare an ordinance if we have some guidelines. Even though it may not be appropriate here.
Are you keeping a list of the things that you wish were on the ord, in an ordinance so we can deliver that to the town council?
So if you recall, we started with that many, many moons ago, many moons. So we do still have that running list.
Okay, good.
Jeff, when you say that you're not comfortable with it, does that, are you telling us that you don't think that? Like when this goes to the lawyer, that he's going to say that this is. Doable, or do you just think that it's?
I'm not saying I think it's illegal. Uh, I don't think it's a good fit for zoning. I think, um, that. You. The, these, these issues are better and more efficiently addressed in a townwide ordinance for all the same reasons that your. Uh, town attorney. Um, suggested what should be in the short-term rental ordinance and what shouldn't be. Uh, you know, it's not that you can't push the envelope and try. Uh, but it's not, it's not a best practice.
Okay.
This will be a good incentive, right? To get the ordinance out.
I just had two. Two questions, uh, maybe three. So, uh, number three, where it says the location of SDRs. In, in this draft, it says and/or. But I thought when I heard you just read it, you said. Or, and I think it should be just or.
Where are you reading?
Number three on page three. What if there's no accessory building?
Uh, yeah, so right, actually, you're right. Um, so it would be. Or, or would be, uh, consistent with the, the STR standards because. One.
Because just about, well, the reason is too, is that right above it, number two says there may only be one STR per lot. So it has to be just or.
It has to be or, that's a good point.
And, and now I'll question that number two. That's what I was going to ask is that another one was. What's the harm? Because I, I'm sure we've got a bunch in Mystic right now that are exactly like this, where there's more than one, two buildings. And the basement of one building is an STR. And in the back is another building is an STR. There's two. I can think of several buildings, that several lots that already have that.
And it's all one lot?
It's, it's definitely one lot. And. And, and I look at one of those things that, and what's the harm? And I don't know what the harm is.
More noise, more people.
You're up to sixteen people.
Well, that was going to be, that's my next, that's one of my next, uh.
And that takes care of that because you can't, because it's, they can't fit anymore on these. So it's the number of people that. Watching, not the number of kitchens. Yeah, so I don't, I don't have a problem. The idea is more than one. How about more than two? And that, that's, that, that could take care of it because there's nothing wrong with the one in the basement, plus the one in the backyard.
But wouldn't that, uh, be what, if we make this, those others would be grandfathers though, right?
Yeah.
No, but it's an ordinance.
Advising an ordinance now. And I think the thing is too, is that when you, if you allowed to, and then the person is away for six months of the year, you've. Created, uh.
I only saw twelve people.
That, that's my next thing is that. I mean, the twelve and the sixteen, I think that's. That was acceptable to the bed and breakfast to me. Because you knew that the owner was there. Sixteen people starts to look like a party house.
Well, but some of these houses are big.
Well, maybe they are, but maybe we should not say how many people, but how many people, like if there's a. With the bed and breakfast, bedrooms, two people for every bedroom.
That's an easy thing to. Yeah, but that one is, that one is, you can go on Zillow and learn how many bedrooms are in a house.
They can't advertise it.
They can't advertise it, so that's an easy one.
They will make a lot of small bedrooms, just like Japan, you have a sleeping.
Well, but then they need to meet the codes.
All people.
And you've got to have, uh, but not to exceed sixteen and twelve. And a parking space for. So, so what you do, you're going to be wedging them in one or the other.
Parking's a good thing.
And if the total, make sure that that total of bedrooms is per lot. Rather than per STR, then we don't care if it's divided into two STRs. You'll sell the same number of people, the same number of cars. It might just be two units.
I don't like the idea of two STRs per lot.
I don't know.
Bad incentive. For danger neighborhoods. Having so many more people stay there, parking.
I think it might not be any more people. It's the same number of people.
It's, yeah, but it's really getting to commercial. That's really commercial.
But once inside the existing house or a bigger house, but still inside a house, you won't from the outside. I don't think we'd ever see it. You wouldn't hear because it's the same number of people and the same number of cars.
It's not the same.
It would be the same number of people if we say it's per lot, STR.
I think it expands the residential use beyond what we're willing to live with. That's how I would determine it.
So what, what does that, is that a, a reasonable way to, to do it with matching them to the bedrooms?
So no more than two people per bedroom with a maximum of sixteen or twelve in these two instances.
Yeah.
That's how, that's how Black Island does it. And even the real estate agents, everyone knows that. That tune is just, that's how it works.
Then there's not people sleeping on a porch, couch. I mean, a bedroom is a, we have a definition for a bedroom in the building code, right? And it's got to have smoke detectors and it's got to have a closet or whatever it is that. Makes a bedroom, a bedroom. I don't know if these will get a closet. Not for a real estate definition of a bedroom. You have to have a closet in this country.
Yeah, but you can't have wardrobes in old houses because they didn't have closets.
That's true, but I don't know if you can, but the real estate agent can call it a bedroom. Yeah, that kind of have a closet, gotta have the right ceiling height, gotta have a closet. You can sleep in there.
So we are. Listing into the territory again of things I would much rather sneak dealt with and. Uh, and this was on the list, the, uh, you know. Number of people per bedroom is, is on our list of our wishlist for a townwide ordinance. You're wearing me down and I will, I will add these things if we can just get something passed.
I'm okay with the being any ordinance.
Twenty-five minutes to go.
Maybe the trick is, right, let's get it into this. But make sure that it becomes the ordinance so we can not rely on this.
Well, I think we'd have to sit down with the council.
Is that, is that some, is that, or is our attorney going to tell us that that's not? Manageable or not doable?
The attorney has already commented on this issue and advised you not to include this in, in zoning.
The number, number of bedrooms.
I'm pretty sure that's.
Number of bedrooms or number of.
Number of people for bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah, so people for bedroom. So we just have bedrooms. Well, I mean, if it's not doable, then I would say then for me, then we reduce that number from sixteen and twelve to. Something that's, I don't know how you do it, but. But it's, it's not doable to sixteen, it's not doable to four, it's just not doable. For the number of people, what he's. Oh, well, that's it. I mean, you're trying to match it to the. Two ways is there's. Well, what with, with the zoning part. Is that it's tough to get people to do anything if you don't at least ask them to do it. And that's kind of the way I, I look at putting it in the zoning, even if you don't expect people just kind of flagrantly not want to do it. Well, that's what the ordinance is for. But in the meantime, we've asked people not to overload the bedrooms and not to, and, and to do these things. It's, it's asking them to. Yeah, I mean, it seems like it would also be a. Uh, I mean, because I don't know, it seems like it would be a building code violation if you've got people sleeping in places that don't have. Smoke detectors. I mean, where a person sleeps is supposed to have a smoke detector.
That's what the building code says.
That's what it says. You know, sleeping. That's a code violation. That's not a zone. Then that gets us to where we want to be. Which is people in bedrooms with smoke detectors.
Yes, that, that point, that is a code issue and. You can call in your code compliance if. There's a violation in that regard.
I mean, it's, it's an easy thing to search. How many bedrooms are in a house? Well, and, and it's also an easy thing for what these guys are fixed is to put a, 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 a smoke detector. Well, in every room, you've got to, as opposed to just one downstairs. It just needs to be a, for your battery one, that's legal.
But, yeah, how are you going to enforce it anywhere?
No, 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 it's not. I mean, the thing is, is that a lot of times these, anything can fly under the radar and. When you enforce it is when there's a prob.
What's next?
All right, so, um. On the flip side of that. Uh, looking at making the bed and breakfast. Section consistent with the STR section. One of the things that we caught was that, uh, there's a limit currently of twenty-one night, uh, twenty-one nights stay in a bed and breakfast. Uh, versus the thirty-night stay for a short-term rental. Um, so in this draft, we extended that twenty-one nights to thirty nights to be consistent. We added, uh, the noise nuisance standard for bed and breakfast, which had not been applicable currently. Uh, and likewise, we added, uh, the standards for lighting that we have suggested for. Um. Short-term rentals. Uh, because again, that seemed reasonable. If we're going to expect that for short-term rentals, we should expect it for bed and breakfast rooms as well.
When, when, uh. Just as a general sort of question, because I was, when you have the accessory and that can be used for a short-term rental. Is the, and from what I can tell, there's no reason that the person who owns the property couldn't live in the accessory. And, and short-term rental out the primary.
The way this is written, that would be permissible.
And then the other thing that I, I had one other. Note here that was, uh, and it's just that seems like a strange sentence. Page on two. On the, uh. Page two. At the bottom. It says the lot upon which the STR exists must include the pri, must be the primary residence. Of an owner occupant. I don't, maybe it's, maybe the definition of a lot, it seems like a. The lot isn't a primary residence, right? It just seems like a strange sentence, but. The lot upon which the STR exists must be the primary residence, but. The lot is never a primary residence. Oh, I just wrote include. Contain, okay, whatever, whatever word it is, but that was the only other.
Must contain, sure, I can make that.
I don't know, the residence is a lot. The residence is a building.
Uh, contain is good.
What about the, uh, Stoneington ordinance? Does that have anything in there that? You should be looking at.
That is also included in your package.
I mean, it did have some. And rules about telling somebody, an agent. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it did have some rules about telling somebody, an agent. On site or available, which might, to me, was a good thing.
Those are things that were in the order.
Yeah, so I thought there was some very good lessons from Stonington for for a townwide ordinance.
That that would take care of the potentially six months when someone was away, right?
Yep, yep.
Yes.
So that's on your list, Jeff.
Yes. You're gonna hand a nice little packet to your town council.
I mean, that was on the initial, the startup memo that that Jeff did for us here, the things you can do by zoning.
I mean, things that we want.
All right.
Any other comments?
Good.
Nope, that's good. So ready to go on short term.
That's, that's all I got. That's all I got for tonight.
All right, all right then.
So we'll make these changes and get applications ready.
That's it, well, and I think the.
And schedule a meeting with your town council.
That was the the goal, right, to get your thoughts in order for um. A text amendment and then to meet with the council to make sure that whatever ordinance they're developing. Put it in application.
But.
Yeah.
Well, but should we put it in as an application anyway? Because yeah, the council is gonna be tied up till the budget season. Seasons, and they don't want to take any action till we.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's worthwhile sending the draft to the council first.
But I mean, we are.
You can go one of two ways, we can proceed with an application now, or if you want to meet, because the council will still have. Some regular business meetings.
Well, yes, but I don't think they want to get into something that's sensitive, they should.
Yeah, so all right, so why don't we do that? I mean, once we get this in order, um I mean, clearly, we need to run it by the town attorney that while we're doing that, we can also. Send it over to the council. This is, this is our draft that we will like go to application with. Yeah, that sounds good.
And along with the things that we think should go into.
Right, and it was recognized, some of these things are better suited for ordinance.
Right.
Um and frankly.
Well, better, I would suggest like better suited for ordinance, but also. That may maybe there's room to, I don't know what, give a little bit. If the ordinance can protect the residential areas, you know, that. And I'm not gonna say negotiate, but that's what, you know, is that, that may be worth at least, I'm gonna stop talking.
You have anything else? You have enough to work with now, Jeff?
I think so, I hope so. Uh and again, I will plan on cranking out uh updated drafts tomorrow. Uh so you have that ASAP.
Great, thank you for all your help.
Certainly, always a pleasure working with you guys.
I know, it's made a big difference.
Yeah, Jeff, thank you. I thought you did a great job.
Thank you.
Fighting the issues and giving us the choice versus being prescriptive. You did a really good job on that.
Thank you.
That's.
Yeah.
It is your community and your choice. I I don't get to make those decisions, so thank you.